All right, welcome everybody to the Janesville League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Janesville City Council. This is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Wisconsin, the League of Women Voters of Janesville, and presented in cooperation with JATV. My name is Eileen Newcomer and I'll be serving as our moderator tonight. A little bit about the League of Women Voters of Janesville. We are a nonpartisan organization which works to register voters, host candidate forums, study local, state, and national issues, and to bring informative programs to the citizens of Janesville and Northern Rock County. To learn more about us, you can visit our website, www.lwvjvl.org, or you can follow us on Facebook and Instagram to get information and stay involved. A quick announcement, have you heard of vote411.org? It's the voter information platform of the National League of Women Voters Education Fund that shows you what's on your ballot. Candidate responses to questions asked by the league are there in the candidate's own words. This year's responses for the Janesville City Council, Janesville School Board, and Wisconsin Supreme Court candidates will be posted by March 18th, so please do check that out as a resource. We also want to offer a special thank you to candidates who take the time to answer the questions to give voters a great source of information. You may also use Vote411 to find recordings of candidate debates, forums, and more information about the upcoming election. As always, the League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any candidates or parties and strives to provide accurate and unbiased information consistent with our mission, empowering voters, defending democracy. Now to get into the nuts and bolts of tonight's forum, let's go over the guidelines. Candidates have not received the questions in advance and will take turns being the first to answer the questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond, and we time the responses to give each candidate an equal opportunity to be heard and to try and cover as many topical topics as possible in a short time span. We've also invited Janesville residents to submit questions for the candidates in advance of the forum, and members of our live audience will also be able to submit questions in writing. If you would like to submit a question, just raise your hand, somebody will come by and pick it up, or if you don't have a card yet, you can also raise your hand to get a card to write your question on. We also have question checkers who will be, like I said, collecting the questions. They're going to help me out by sorting them by topic, checking for redundancy, and to be sure all questions are relevant to all the candidates, as each candidate will have the opportunity to respond to each question. Also, we encourage you to continue the conversation after the forum is over. We have a limited amount of time tonight, so we may not get to every single question that everyone has, but we do encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity to speak with the candidates and get your question answered even if we're not able to cover it during the forum tonight. Now it's time to meet the candidates. As I say your name, if each candidate could just quickly, you know, raise your hand, and then after we introduce everybody, we'll go into opening statements. So the first candidate is Michael Cass. Josh Erdman. Not with us tonight, but was invited, is Jack Herndon. Michael Jackson. Heather Miller. And Richard Nino. And just as a reminder, these six candidates are running for four open seats on the city council, and will be, we will have an election for them coming up on Tuesday, April 1st of this year, 2025. And just a note, Jack Herndon, as I said, is not able to be here, obviously. He was invited, and we made contact with each candidate in early February to ensure all of them knew the date, time, and location of this forum. All six candidates invited our invitation to participate, but at this time, obviously, Jack is not here. And in addition, JTV will broadcast the forum live on JTV Channel 994 on Spectrum Cable, and live stream it on the JTV Media YouTube channel. The forum is going to be recorded and made available for public viewing on the league's website and Vote411. So now to get started on the opening statements. As I said, each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements. We are going to start with Michael Cass.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Cass. I'm a lifelong resident of Janesville. I grew up on the south side and the west side, currently live on the east side. Professionally, I work for the state as a consumer protection investigator. Previous to that, I was a probation and parole agent for several years, worked in law enforcement and other areas of corrections. I serve as the chair of the Community Development Authority for the city. I've been doing that since, been on the committee since 2001, sorry, 2021, and have been serving as the chair for the last year. I've also been serving on Janesville Mobilizing for Change, which is the city's youth substance prevention agency. I've been doing that since 2021, and was recently appointed to the Advisory Committee of Appointments last fall, and that's where we look at applicants who are applying to be on city committees and boards, and make recommendations to the city manager and city council president for placement on those boards. And I appreciate everyone being here, appreciate the league for hosting this event. It was a league volunteer who helped me register to vote in 2008, so I'm appreciative of that.
Great, now we will move on to Josh Erdman.
Hi, my name is Josh Erdman. This is my second time running for city council, having run last year. I've been a Janesville resident for about 17 years. I work regularly as a, I have 20 years of experience as a firefighter, paramedic, working up in Madison, which is my main experience of dealing with, making decisions that can be life-saving and life-threatening, and coming up with solutions, which is part of what I'm bringing to my run as a city council person, as I did last year. In my time here in Janesville, and I actually did my paramedic ride time with the Janesville Fire Department 20 some years ago, that was my first introduction to the city of Janesville. In the time that I've been here in the city, I've served on the city's Sustainable Janesville Committee for four years. That was my first foray into dealing with the city government directly. As a volunteer, I work, I'm currently the president of the Green Rock Audubon Society here in, here in our county. I work with Ice Age Trail Alliance. I volunteered with Rotary Gardens and Paw Print Park, which is the dog park on the south side of Janesville. So I've put forward some experience there. Along with being able to come here and bring the skills that I've developed over a 20-year career of dealing with subjective and objective information, weighing risks and benefits, I also bring a master's degree in emergency management to the position as well. So I have experience with operational planning, risk and benefit analysis, community response, and event recovery, and shortened term, medium, and long term, and all of those things I expect to bring to bear as a, as a council member as well in my decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Jackson.
Thank you for hosting this and for providing us this opportunity. I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I don't want to sound cliche, but I love Janesville. I've been, lived here for 25 years. I'm a homeowner, pastored New Life Church for better than 16 years, founded Freedom Fest, Janesville Food Pantry. But I've also enjoyed for the last four years, serving on the Janesville City Council. It's been a unique pleasure. During that time, I have amassed a good deal of experience, and I believe experience matters. I believe that serving on the council, going through the motions of committee work and meeting the constituents really does give a person an education and, again, experience. During these next two years, Janesville will assume ownership of the JACCO GM site. We're going to open the Woodman's Sports and Convention Center. Hopefully, we will open the Children's Museum and the Boys and Girls Club of Rock County. We'll draft a new zoning code and subdivision ordinance. The present zoning and code and ordinance was adopted in 81. Some goes all the way back to the 70s, and so it's time that those be looked at. I've been a part of that process as a member of the Plan Commission as well as the city council. I believe I have the time to serve. I'm retired. This is a volunteer position. There are times when it feels like a full-time job, the meetings, the constituent concerns, phone calls, emails, you could go on and on and on. And that, in my four years, I missed one meeting, and that was due to COVID. I have the time, I want to serve, and I invite your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Miller.
Hello there, and thank you again for hosting. I'm a mom of six. I have a law enforcement background currently. I am a caregiver and advocate for elderly and disabled in our community. I am a, I'm an incumbent, and I've been on the council now for four years. We don't always see eye to eye on the council, and that is a good thing. You know, as much as I would like to say, everybody agrees, we don't. And for that, I think it's benefited us. We have a number of different points of view, which creates a really enjoyable and sometimes chaotic situation. I think there's a lot of things we need to improve within the city. We act as a liaison between the community and city government, and we need to remember that. We direct, we sometimes referee, and we give information when it's necessary. And so, opening the doors to better communication has to be in the forefront. I'm going to fight to continue to open those doors because we really, really need to stop the checkboxes. I enjoy the service to my community. I've lived here for 27 years. I'm a transplant from the Chicago area, so if you want chaos, there's, there you go. But I enjoy living in this community. I think we have a safe community, and I'm looking forward to what we have in store.
Thank you. And Richard Nino.
Thank you. Before I begin with my biography, I want to take a moment to explain to everyone that candidate Herndon is not here this evening because of a prior business requirement that he could not avoid. He's not absent because he chose just not to be here. I was raised here from the age of two months when my parents moved, and my father began his, his medical practice. Went away for 20 years, saw a lot of the United States, and I've now been back for about 30 years. My wife and I are small business owners in the downtown area. It is an honor and a privilege to serve on the council. It's something that I have greatly enjoyed, and I, as has sort of been pointed out, we're at a, at a point in time where some very important things are going to happen in the city, hopefully, and it's something that I very much wish to participate in. The redevelopment of GM JACCO is moving apace, and it's very likely that we'll come to some conclusions in just simply the weeks, weeks, weeks to come, not months or a year. This is a job, and as Michael was alluding to, it really can be something of a job from which I think it's important to be able to bring a variety of experiences and education. I think my life in retail and in operations has helped me greatly to do so, and it's something that I truly wish to continue, and I thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move into the question and answer portion of tonight's forum. As a reminder, if you have a question, please, you know, raise your hand and get your card to the wonderful ladies in the back. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question, and we will rotate who starts with the, answering the questions. Our first question is, "There is considerable community concern about people experiencing homelessness and a lack of affordable housing in Janesville. What is the city council's role and responsibility for addressing these issues, including people who face eviction?" And we will start with Michael Cass.
The city's role, or the council's role, is to work through the approval process of getting development approved. So that's making sure that it's, it's in the area that, that is going to do well, that it's appropriate, as it works its way through the levels of, of the city government and going from there. Also looking at TIF, TIF and TID districts, so making sure that there are areas that are advantageous for developers to build in. We don't have any TID, to my knowledge, any TID or TIF districts for housing construction, but we can have them. The city of Beloit has it, and it's utilized, and I feel like we should be able to do that as well. As far as eviction process goes, that's something that's handled at the courthouse. The city recently did a, did something wonderful by helping out all the residents who were impacted by the mass eviction by a local landlord, and providing funding for those people to relocate, and then just providing through our Community and Neighborhood Services Department, education for renters, for rental assistance programs, and low-income housing assistance as well. So just being a resource and then making sure that we're moving to make, make it easier for developers to build.
Thank you. Same question to you, Josh Erdman.
The affordable housing and homelessness issue is primarily revolves around two things. One, a supply versus demand issue, in which we have much more demand than the supply that we have, and then also how the economic aspects of jobs that are available in the community affect the ability for people to pay for their housing. So the, the council really is responsible for policymaking, and that policymaking needs to make sure that we have a good plan of moving forward with economic development that will develop both housing and commercial and industrial together to have those jobs available, as well as to have a larger amount of housing available at all different levels and different types, to be able to, to give availability and market circumstances for that housing. That's the, that's the biggest way that the council has an effect in doing so. The current rezoning rewrite is a very important piece of that, as I talked about last year as well. It's very important for us to have the opportunity to be able to develop both commercial and housing together. The south side's a prime example of the situation where a supermarket's not very supportable without enough housing and population density available. Those are the sorts of things that need to develop it together, and so the policies need to be in place in order to have that accomplished. I also think it's really important for us to look at what process we can do to get developers to come to Janesville and build that housing. Some of those things is knocking down whatever barriers we can to make that process an easier one. Efficiency in our local government to make sure that some other communities have, have provided some pre-designed housing plans that a developer can come in and utilize, so that they don't have to go through as many aspects of the, of the approval process with planning, so that they can get the project done and be able to do so at lower cost. Those are the sorts of things, along with, so using the houses, the TIFs that are currently very successful, using that end housing money in order to help support affordable housing in the future.
Thank you, Josh. And now we will move to Michael Jackson.
I've been homeless. It's embarrassing, particularly when you're running for public office, to air this part of one's past. But I've been homeless. I know what it's like. My dad served in the Second World War. One day, he asked to talk to me. I was home, home in Switchedaw, Kansas, and we were sitting out on the porch, and he said, "I want to apologize for the poverty," and he, we were raised in deep, deep poverty. And he said, "The war," and this is a quote, "kind of messed me up," and the war had kind of messed my dad up. He wasn't given alcohol, wasn't given the drugs, didn't have mental health issues, as we would commonly assess mental health issues. But it was one instance as to where homelessness came into play, and it was none of the off idea, off-given ideas as to the why. The war just kind of messed him up. And I think when dealing with homelessness, we, we get so clinical about it, but it's really, there's no real one-size-fits-all. I mean, maybe it's a war issue, maybe it's drugs, it could be mental health. Gifts Homeless Shelter here in town says one out of two of their people that come in for help have mental health issues. We do a lousy job in solving mental health issues when it relates to homelessness. Hope we come back to housing a little later on, but I just, homelessness is kind of close to me.
Thank you. And now we will move on to Heather. Same question to you.
Oh, we worked on a strategic plan, and I know the city has a multitude of plans. We've got a plan for everything. Unfortunately, the plans, we've come to find out, don't work together, and they're better shelved on a, on a shelf because they don't have any sort of actionability to them. So our strategic plan was important in that this home-for-all has become one of our priorities within the city, and we've really looked at this as not leaving the priority. Every time we have discussion about economic development, or relocation, or improvements, it always comes back to residents. We can have all the economic development we want, but if you can't house people, you're not going to be successful. We're go, we can have all of the fabulous amenities, but if we can't house people, we're not going to keep that money in our community. And so, we constantly have these conversations. We are constantly trying to better our positions. We are always at the forefront, looking to improve upon what we have and increase our housing. That, it's just a given. When we look at some of the projects that are coming up, I know we've seen some that have, have what we thought were going to be absolutely phenomenal and improve all of our sustainability and affordability. It's failed, not by any fault of our own, but we continue the conversation because it's a nationwide thing. We're not going to end it next month, next year. It's just something we have to deal.
Thank you. And same question to you, Richard Nino.
As you can tell, housing is multifaceted. It's a big issue, a big problem, and frankly, what the city council can actually do ourselves is fairly limited. This is actually a great time to have a conversation about housing because of the zoning rewrite. And we're looking at changing the zoning code substantially, bringing it up to date, really, allowing mother-in-law, so to speak, apartments in the backyard of a home, which is currently illegal. Tiny home villages, one of the, the charitable organizations in the city is already looking at, at developing one, but that's currently illegal. And then the bigger point perhaps of just making the ability to develop anything in this city easier, which, having built a couple places recently, I can attest is very difficult, has been very difficult. It's about finding ways to help the most people, the most people possible. We talk about trickle-down. If you buy, if you build market-rate apartments, people will hopefully be able to move up into apartments that are, or housing that is found, that becomes open as people move up to their next place. I've had conversation with city manager about a potential location for a city, I won't say owned, but a city developed, city offered homeless shelter. He's talked about where we might be able to put a tiny village. There are a lot of good things going on. It's very multifaceted, and I think that the truth of the matter is, it's not anything we're going to be able to solve in the next year.
Thank you. Now it's time for our next question. The question is, "Do you have any examples of successfully dealing with public hostility?" And to start this question off, we're going to go to Josh Erdman.
I don't, I don't know if you, so working in, in my particular line of work, anything in public safety nowadays obviously has some aspects to it. Councilmember Burdick's in the, in the audience, and he, their side of things, especially on the police side, deals with that even more so than we do, but certainly over the, over the last five years or so, there's been a, a change in the way that public safety gets perceived, and sometimes we're not always welcome. We luckily, on the fire side, get welcomed probably more often, but it definitely is something that, that I face on a day-to-day basis. I've experienced all levels of types of hostility to the, to the extent of having weapons pulled on me, so during that time period, yes. So on a day-to-day basis, dealing with, with citizens is what I do. I've had 20 years of, of doing that, listening to their problems, and trying to find solutions to those problems, which is the same thing that I plan to do as a council member as well. So I'm, in my own interactions with people, I can sometimes come across a little harsher than I probably should, so I understand when people come with emotions. And, and I think right now, especially in our society, emotions is a big thing that obviously everybody that's going to come to. But I welcome any sort of, of interaction with citizens. I think it's one of the things that I most, most want to see the council and the city administration do more than anything else, is make sure that they engage the citizens as much as possible and get their feedback. For any project that exists, any project that's coming up, I think there should be the maximum amount of, of engagement of the, of the citizens to make sure that they are really a part of the development of the city, and not just a side piece that gets kind of mentioned, "Oh, hey, this is what's going on," but really engage. And so, yeah, my past, I've dealt with hostile situations, and I have no problem dealing with any type of emotional response that anyone wants to give me and share with me.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Jackson.
When I first announced I was going to run for city council back in 2021, a gentleman approached me and said, "You know, there's going to be a lot of people that will be upset with you, that will not agree with you, that are going to get downright angry." I said, "I was a minister for 50 years." He said, "You've got all the experience you need." I dealt with a constituent a week ago, interesting case study. She was angry, my goodness, she was angry. She wrote each one of the council members about a particular issue, and it was a Sunday afternoon, and I decided, well- afternoon, and I decided, "Well, I'm going to tackle this. I'm going to make this gal happy." And I looked into her complaint. She was faulting the city council. The city council had enacted an ordinance that blah, blah, blah. So it turned out, a casual reading of her complaint would let me know the city council doesn't do that. I mean, it was way beyond our purview. But she mentioned a particular business that was the object of her anger, and so I contacted that business, dealt with them. They, they explained the situation. It involved the police department, dealt with the non-emergency police department. Got back to the lady, told her, "Here's the problem, here's the answer," and case was resolved. I don't think I got her vote, but she, she was quite, quite upset. But we're going to deal with angry people, and what we do on the council is try to put out the fires. We don't try to soak them. Try to placate people, to help them to understand, to understand the limits of what we can do as a body. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, Heather Miller.
Oh, I know I've got some eyes just waiting to see how I'm going to answer this one. I will tell you that when it comes to law, and when it comes to contracts, and when it comes to doing the right thing, I tend to hold people's feet to the fire. I'm not always on the Christmas card list of everyone in City Hall, and that's okay. I believe in perception. I think perception is real, and I think as city staff and city representatives, we have to be mindful of what perception may be from time to time. And going forward, that perception changes. It changes the, it can change the dialogue, and it can certainly change attitudes. And so I've been on the receiving and the giving end of not being happy with various things. But I will tell you that in my position, I'm able to be heard. And if nothing else, you're going to hear from me, or somebody's going to hear from me, regardless of whether or not something changes. And so I feel like people in general want to be heard, and there's a perception that the community isn't heard, that the city doesn't care. And so I think it's necessary to sometimes be that catalyst, sometimes be that little thorn in somebody's side, just to remind folks that there are people that give a darn.
Thank you. Same question to you, Richard Nino.
I guess it's been my good fortune not to have been in the public safety industry. I've never had the kind of experiences that some people have in this room. But conflict is part of life. I can tell you, people get pretty upset if their entree is overcooked, or if you run out of, out of something when they wanted to order it, or going back many years ago when you were out of stock of something at Christmas at Sears. And it, it isn't the, it isn't the conflict that matters. And in, in any case, it's about trying to come to a resolution, try, and it isn't even about trying to get them to understand me, it's trying to make clear that I understand them. And we deal with lots of this sort of thing on the council. Some of it's very serious, and some of it in instance of mental illness, frankly. But you deal with it, and it's, everybody at a minimum wants to be heard. They want to be understood. And that's what, over the years, I've come to understand myself as what is vital when dealing with conflict. And I, right or wrong, good or bad, I've had plenty of experience, and I think I'm able to bring that to bear successfully.
Thank you. And finally to you, Michael Cass.
Yeah. Working in public safety, criminal justice, working with the public every day, we interact with individuals who, who are not happy, who are upset. We're often dealing with that issue with multiple individuals, whether it's the courts, the district attorney's office, the clients, their family members, the victims. And like everyone, I think everyone here said it, people want to be heard, they want to be understood, and they want you to meet them where they're at with things. And they also want to know a lot of times the why, is why, why are we doing it this way? Why are we not doing this? And that's the person I am, is I want to know the why. And so explaining that to people and being able to say, "This is the why, and maybe this is how we can change the why. So this is, maybe we need to change the code, or maybe we need to ask, you know, the, the streets department to do this instead, to clean up this street first, or the parks people to, to prioritize this park." That's where you get into working with people and, and hearing them out, giving them the why, so they know what the reasoning is, and then working together to get an answer if they don't like the one that you have.
Thank you. Our next question is, "Based on what you know about city government, what do you see as top priorities for the city and why?" And for this question, we're going to get started with Michael Jackson.
Real quickly, I would have to say, first of all, I'm going to put constituent concerns at the top of my list. That's probably not going to be true with everyone at this table, but they elect me, I represent them. When they call, I feel like I have to make that a priority. Public safety is a big one with me. I'm pro-public safety. I feel that it's imperative that people in Janesville feel safe on our streets, in our 21 schools, in our 65 parks, while biking on our 31 miles of bike trails. We're the ninth-largest city in the state. We need to give our public servants the tools they need to fight fires, to rescue someone who is having a heart attack, or for a police action, or whatever. They have to have the right tools. Public service in our city accounts for 49% of our general budget, and for good reason. I think it's also important that housing be made a priority. I know we've already discussed it, and I'm not going to re-address what has been said, but one thing wasn't said, and I want to make it clear. The council has not been setting on its hands when it comes to the issue of housing. We're very concerned about the matter. Since I've been on the council 2021, we've approved 944 housing units for construction. We've added 317 residential units in 2024 alone. We are doing something to address the need. We still got to address the zoning issues. We've still got other matters that we've got to look at, fees and regulations. But I am happy that we are at least building, and we're building a lot.
Thank you. Same question to you, Heather Miller.
Well, for sure, the, the housing has to be a priority. That's not going to go away. So I don't want to, I don't want to sugarcoat it, because housing is in everything that we discuss among the council. When you look at economic development, I think the biggest, I guess the biggest challenge we're going to be faced with, aside from Centennial Park, is going to be our commercial corridors. We have east, we have a lot of intentional attention on the east and the north side, but we have very little, almost no attention on our south and our west. So we have commercial corridors that are in need of a little love, and I think that really needs to be a priority so that we have a vision, that we have an actionable plan, so that we can continue to grow these businesses, we can continue to expand upon what already exists and not lose anything. When we look at economic development as a whole, I think they need to, to really look at a focus. We have brand-new developments that are going up on the south and the west sides, but we don't have the development of our commercial corridors, our businesses. These need to grow, and we need to improve, and if it means rebranding, re-establishing, we need to look that way.
Thank you. Same question to you, Richard Nino.
First, as a member of the council, I think a major priority for us is oversight. I mean, the council doesn't do a whole lot. We have an entire administration that actually goes out and acts on the part, on the part of the city and its citizens. It's our job to make sure that our budgets are lean and reasonable, and then as a result, that our taxation remains the same, that is fair and reasonable. We, we oversee the development of policy. We pass policy. These are the things that we do as a council. Now, taken to a more specific, I, I keep coming back to economic development. Economic development is what drives population growth. Economic development is what keeps our taxes at what is at best a reasonable level, because it's the growth of our taxable base that keeps us from having to raise taxes to meet our budgetary needs. The council will do great things this year, and maybe next year, in approving the new zoning codes, which will help all sorts of economic development opportunities. We will be faced with the redevelopment of GM Jacko, which again, should help the city grow tremendously. These are the sorts of things that I think are the biggest priorities that we face.
Thank you. Michael Cass, your response, please.
Housing is one of the top priorities that I would have. It's been well-stated tonight that the zoning codes are being updated, and I want to ensure that those are updated to include housing density, to include things like a mother-in-law suite or a backyard apartment. Also looking at building up instead of out. At a forum this morning, one of the questions was about farmland and how we're, we're taking a lot of farm, not we're taking it, but a lot of farmland is being converted into commercial property. And how do we address that so we're not losing farmland? And I spoke about building up. Right now, our zoning code only allows for a certain height for multifamily. I'm not wanting sky rises like we see in the bigger cities, but we can increase our housing by building up, ensuring that we continue to have quality city services, that our trash collectors, our parks. That requires having a prudent budget and preparing for what may come from a federal budget changes as it comes through the state and to us. So moving forward, looking at how do we continue what we're doing with possible budget cuts from a federal level that impact us is important. And then just continued economic development, especially on the south and west side. There has been some movement there, but not as much attention as, as there could have been over the years, like we've had downtown and on, on the northeast side.
Thank you. And Josh Erdman, same question to you.
Three priorities for me, primarily improving responsiveness to citizens, number one. Number two, focusing on the neglected commercial corridors all over the city to make sure that the city as a whole is all being raised upward. And thirdly, making sure that we have some long-term planning to deal with maintaining our essential services, making sure that our needs are put forward ahead of our wants, especially in, in changing financial climates. So in terms of responsiveness to citizens, I think I've mentioned, I really want to make sure that, encourage both the council and the administration to make sure that they're meeting the public where they, where they sit. A very prime example, most recently, is the 101 Rockport Road Project. There was some very slight advertisement of that particular development to the neighbors who were most affected by that in the fourth ward. And it took some local groups getting out and getting that message out to make sure that people showed up and wanted to participate and took place in a, in a good citizen-led participation forum in a way that was useful, and actually overwhelmed what the city had planned for, because the city had not done much in terms of invitation to that. I want to see more, making sure that people are engaged in every project that, that is going to affect them in some way. With the neglected corridors, again, mixed use. Make sure that commercial and, and housing are developed together. We need both. We need jobs, we need housing. Those things should be happening all over the city. Doing that on the outskirts is going to always be a benefit to the downtown. And then finally, making sure that in the long-term, public safety, street sanitation is the thing that'll keep us safe, are very important, making this a community that people want to live in. And it's very important that we look at the long-term of aging populations and how that's going to be affected financially.
Thank you so much. Time for our next question. What is the role of JATV in city government, and is it worthy of city funding? We'll start with you, Heather Miller.
Oh, boy. JATV. JATV is absolutely worthy of, of funding. I think one of the biggest hurdles facing JATV right now is bringing JATV into our current market. JATV is a wonderful asset that is utilized not as much as we could. I think there's many, many other outlets that could benefit, well, the community would benefit, but there's many other outlets that could utilize the works of JATV. It's, it's public television. When we look at funding, I think it's important to realize the digital age is now. We, to try and find something on YouTube, if you are digitally connected, finding things on YouTube is almost like a needle in a haystack. And so when you go and you search for something, you're going to come up with 10,000 different ideas that are close to whatever it is that you're searching. And so having this availability to stream an app, that is huge. That is a game changer in today's communications. And so that comes with a price tag, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on where you sit on that. But investing in JATV will allow us to stay connected, be better connected, and have access to the information when we need it.
Thank you. Same question to you, Richard Nino.
That's an interesting concept, because I think a strong argument could have been made in prior years that of late, JATV probably didn't deserve to be funded. It had, in many ways, been underutilized. If you look at what had been televised, you were looking at things that were old and probably didn't receive much viewership when they were new. However, JATV can be a great asset, and I think it's now headed in the right direction in that it will help be a part of the communication arm of the city as well as a source for the public to televise to whatever it might happen to be that they would like. It is a, it's an opportunity for the community to express themselves if they so choose. It's been underutilized and probably under-marketed as such, and now, as it will be used by the city as well as an arm of the communication department in order to make known, hopefully better and more widely, what is going on in the city, what is available in the city. Hopefully, that JATV will now be worthy of its continued existence.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Cass.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Richard said. I think it's, it's an important tool for the city to use. When we talk about the transparency and what the city is doing, it's a great tool that, that the city can use to, to do those things. I, I believe it should be, it should be funded, and it should continue on, whether that's its, its, its own app, or an app that maybe is, is what a lot of municipalities use if that, that is out there. Let's look at that. I think marketing it is important. A lot of people, younger people, don't know what that is, what a public access channel is. I- I grew up, I don't say watching it, but knowing what it was. When I got grounded, my parents made me watch it sometimes. So just, I think, yeah, marketing it more, making sure that people know how to access it. If there's people out there that want to have a show, that they can do it, that there's resources available for them to utilize. It's here in this building. They can, students can use it if they want, right? People want to know what they can do with it. Let's bring it to them. Let's advertise it more and make it something that is worthwhile.
Thank you. Same question to you, Josh Erdman.
I would hope that anybody watching at home or that's going to be watching at home later appreciates JATV, because they're the ones that are bringing this to you. And so absolutely, it 100% needs to be funded. Unfortunately, the city sort of lapsed on its ability to deal with that over time. It wasn't well-marketed. And at one time, the franchise fees coming from cable, which obviously was a bigger thing than it is now, more than fully paid for it. And so the city was able to take those excess fees beyond that. And as those fees have decreased as cables become less of a thing, we never gave money back to JATV, and that's the reason that it is where it is today. It's very important that it does get funded. Despite Councilmember Nino's assertion that moving it has somehow changed something, there's still no funding for the personnel positions that are currently there in JATV. It's very important for us to be able to maintain which what is basically our city's possible availability of First Amendment rights, the ability to be able to say or do or get out whatever information needs to be done. It absolutely should be something that the city should continue to use as part of being able to engage citizens. And so, but that's always been true of JATV. That hasn't changed at all. But from that perspective, it does need to be funded. It does need to be modernized. It needs to have a business plan. Other communities, Colorado, for instance, some of the communities in Colorado have been able to take their local television and turn it into something that local businesses use and actually pay for to utilize the equipment and then using that money to then give access, better access to the citizens. And that's the thing that I think we never really explored here in Janesville, and we really should have in order to make sure that it is well-funded and that it goes on as something that's more modern and more useful to the citizens than what it has been in the past few years.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Jackson.
I was on JATV for seven years as a minister. I was at Deli, Luke's Deli, one day, and a guy was going like this to me. I didn't have a clue. And I looked over, you know, and finally, after several minutes of this, I mean, it was, it got awkward. I was waiting in line. And he came over and he said, "You don't know me, do you?" And I said, "No, I don't know you." He said, "Well, I watch you every week on television, on JATV." And, well, I should have weighed back then. I realized that. The issue with JATV has been resolved as far as governance go. The real issue now is funding. I met with Mr. Lehner, our city manager, today regarding this very issue. Currently, the funding is split with the utility or franchise fee is split 80% to the general fund, 20% JATV. I said, "Why don't we do 50/50?" He said, "It's not going to make enough difference. The fund, the fees are so small now that that's not going to help. We've got to come up with a better plan." So we knocked around various ways of raising funds. And really, I think you could help us. What can we do to raise some money for JATV? We have a whole plethora of options. I see Rich Gruber back there with his Civics Academy. Mr. Lehner and I talked about that. We need programs like that. We talked about JPAC. We talked about local sports. What can we bring in to the fold and make a part of our JATV experience? Believe me, a lot of work is being done on this front. I talked to Alan Luckett last Monday about it. I think we're going to be happy in the end. Just be patient. We're going to get there.
Thank you. And I lost my place for a second. Okay, next question, I believe. Are there innovative programs that have been implemented in neighboring or peer communities that you would like to see happen in Janesville? And to start off this question, we're going to go to Richard Nino.
Well, that's rather broad, and I have to admit, a little unexpected. I will say that I don't have a great deal of opportunity to travel and to speak with other city councils and the like. I will say that we have an advantage here in that we have a relatively new city manager with a great deal of experience, having worked in a variety of cities around the country. And I think that City Manager Lehner is just now really beginning to bring to us new ideas, new ways of doing things. And I think we'll continue to benefit from doing so. At the same time, I know that he attends various conferences and the like of cities and city managers and all. I have a full-time job and a couple of them, in fact. And I don't see myself as a great source for information about other cities, because I just don't have the opportunity to investigate. I wish I could. I can promise that anything I do run across that I find interesting, I bring up to City Manager Lehner. We talk about a wide variety of ideas, whether he likes them or not. And I can only promise to do my best to continue to bring ideas forward as I find them.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Cass.
Yeah, the city of Oshkosh has a tiny village. It's a public-private partnership where they work with a nonprofit. They offer housing for families with support services, employment services, employment training, financial training and education, family support for these families. That is something that we could do here once the zoning code is updated, and I feel like that would benefit the city as a whole. We have a lot of unhoused families, schoolchildren in the city, something like that. And then working with groups like Smart Towns. It's a nonprofit that looks at updating zoning codes, working on housing, pedestrian safety and community togetherness or community events. They have a lot of free toolkits that cities and municipalities can use, a lot of technical support as well. It's out there. I think that the city could do a better job of being more proactive and looking for those things, especially working with organizations that are already, that exist, that are free or low cost. That would be something I would like to see, as well as maybe a grant writer, a full-time or a part-time grant writer for the city, someone that is dedicated to find these funds for projects throughout the community that we don't really have or that we don't have to contract out for. That way, we can have someone looking for the funds, and then we're able to write for those, get them, and then implement them to make our community better.
Thank you. Same question to you, Josh Erdman.
Two things off the top of my head. One is utilizing TID Housing Fund money to help convert units above commercial stores into additional housing. That's a project that Beloit started last year. Again, in the meantime, before, you know, there's a lot of process that goes into building brand-new housing. But taking existing buildings and converting those while expensive is certainly something where at least the structure is already there and it's easy to move along. Most recently, the project that was just approved the other day of the Find It All Building downtown and some advancements to that. It's nice to be able to maintain our downtown in a nice historical fashion, but at the same time, make sure that we're increasing both market rate and affordable housing options. And there's plenty of empty space in the city that we could be encouraging development in. Secondly, the other one would be, a lot of cities in Wisconsin have implemented community paramedicine. Like I mentioned before, we have an aging baby boomer generation that we have not seen the peak of their potential for disabilities and the need for fire and EMS just yet. And so it's important to look for things to alleviate the burden that is on the fire department, who has to go to those calls. And community paramedicine is an aspect by which you can alleviate mental health calls from the police side of things. You can alleviate people who need more long-term stuff and some long-term solutions and get them into community programs that they want, and then free up both police and fire, which we run fairly lean in comparison to other communities, comparable communities. We can maintain there in the long-term and make sure that they're available for the increased number of calls that we can only expect and the increased costs that we can only expect to be occurring in the next few years.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Jackson.
I'm going to go back to homelessness. A number of cities, communities have addressed it in a variety of creative ways. I'm thinking of a group in Texas, I think it's called 360, that has, as someone alluded to earlier, built a community of tiny houses. I've been encouraged to look into that as a possible solution to Janesville's plight with the homeless and perhaps something we could do on the Jacko site, the south end of the Centennial Park. Secondly, I think the Woodman Center offers us a great deal of opportunity. I looked at Wichita, Kansas, again, my hometown, and what they did with their new arena. And they brought in a great variety of programs and events that has done a lot of good for that community. And I've watched and followed it with great interest because of being from there. But I also went to Oshkosh and visited their community center, their convention center, I should say. They have a NBA G League team, The Herd. And I found it interesting to study up on that. And I thought, perhaps that is something we could explore here in Janesville, something to complement the Janesville Jets, to bring in a G League NBA team. Well, out of time.
Thank you very much. And to you, Heather Miller.
I have approached the city manager for two years on hiring a grant writer. We have the opportunity to take advantage of so many available grants that are across the globe. There's grants that go from housing to economic development to education to farming, everywhere in between. And we don't have a designated person who specifically is trained in writing grants. We're trying to muddle our way through. We're trying to have our professional people try and figure it out. And I think we can do better. I think we can utilize that time better, and we can utilize that position in a way that we don't even know how far it can take us. That would be first and foremost. Secondly, when we look at housing, we have already partnered with one of the nonprofits in town, and they are looking for space to create a tiny home community. And so looking at this for not just the unhoused, but for our veterans, for our aging population, for people who don't want to live in shared walls or don't want to have such a large amount of space to take care of, this is something that we can really improve upon and look to people who have done that. Oshkosh is a great example.
Thank you. Time for our next question. How will the city of Janesville become more sustainable and make progress towards the goal of reaching carbon neutrality by 2050? And we'll start with you, Michael Cass.
Working to identify sustainable building practices and encouraging, whether that's through a financial incentive with builders, to have those sustainable practices put into place when they're building, encouraging the use of renewable energy, whether that's solar, wind. And again, there's some things that we can do as a city and some things that we have to wait, you know, the city has to approve, and we have the authority to have our own say in that. But just ensuring that we are, be on the forefront and encouraging those things through our TIDS and TIFs is a good way to do that. And then also just making sure that we are encouraging the use of our bike paths and the bike lanes that we have in our streets. You know, encouraging people to use electric transportation, looking at are there ways to improve that so it is more functional for, it's easier for someone to use that instead of driving across town? And what does that look like? It's a big question with a lot of possibilities. And so there's a number of things that we can do as a city and as a council to make sure that we are sustainable and working towards, you know, zero carbon emissions. I think it was the term that you used. Thank you. And those are good places to start is sustainable building practices.
Thank you. Same question to you, Josh Erdman.
First and foremost, we need to actually take that concept seriously since we passed a resolution for that several years ago and have really done nothing in the meantime to deal with it. I was on the Sustainable Janesville Committee that moved that forward to the council at the, despite the fact that the administration was somewhat against it in certain ways, passed it on to the council, and it was passed. Since that time period, there's basically been no movement on it. So the administration has sort of kept it hidden, and the council has kind of just, by omission, not done anything to make sure that the administration's moving it forward. So first and foremost, that requires us to do some planning. That requires us probably to do some contracting to see what solutions that are going to be big things that we can move forward with. But in the meantime, we also should be making sure that we are actually, at every decision point that occurs, in the meantime, we should be looking at whether there are small things that we can do with those projects that might do so. One that we missed very recently was putting the solar panels on the Woodman Center. We had the opportunity to have taken carbon credits as opposed to just taking money to make sure that we had some funding for the Woodman Center. And yet, we chose not to do that. That was the other option that Alliant provided us in allowing them to use the rooftop of the Woodman Center for that purpose. So we missed an opportunity right there of a project situation that we could have done very simply and started one thing to move forward. We've got a timeline on that. Again, it's not something that we have to for sure hit exactly that date goal. But in the end point, we really should be doing something to move that forward, and that requires action now as opposed to waiting and kicking it down the line over and over again as it had been in the strategic plan for the last few years.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Jackson.
We have a Sustainable Janesville Committee that's charged with coming up with ideas. We have a vigorous recycling program. We have three or four solar gardens. The one I'm thinking about is the Alliant Energy Solar Garden, Community Garden out, 2.25 megawatt solar garden out by Rock Haven. But something I'm frustrated with in this whole sustainability issue, I went on a snowplow ride along a week, well, whenever we had that last snow. And I talked to the driver. I talked about how long it takes to get a snowplow. How much does it cost to buy a snowplow? And then I talked to Mr. Lehner. What about fire trucks? How much does it cost? Talked to the fire chief. He said, "It's a million dollars for a fire truck. We got five, and it's going to take three to four years to get one." And I said, "What if we were to go to 2050 and reach that goal of being low or no carbon emissions? What would that cost us to replace every vehicle in our Janesville parking or utility or vehicle corral?" Thank you. And I couldn't even come up with a figure. We have got to come up with some kind of figure if we're going to do this. The report that Josh alluded to was in March of 2024. It called for a study committee. We've not received that study committee. I asked Mr. Lehner about that today. What about that study committee from 2024? And he said, "I will look into it." We've got a lot of ground to make up on this issue.
Same question to you, Heather Miller.
Oh, we have an awful lot of missed opportunities. That's being- That's being nice. That's the best way that I can say we are headed to carbon neutrality, missed opportunities. We have an organization, a committee within the city, that is tasked with sustainability. I was part of that committee for two years, and I can tell you the number of things we've done within the community I can probably show you on less than one hand. And so, I think we need to start not missing those opportunities. When we have some engagement, we need to actually ask for our committee input. These are people who have the passion and the will and the commitment to want to better our community in terms of the long road ahead. They're looking at how can we make it better for our future generations? And so, if we can't do that now, why have a committee? What are we missing? We missed the Woodman Center. Josh is absolutely right. We missed it. That never should have been to pay down some of the Woodman Center. It should have been to generate and continue to generate more energy. But when we start revamping these commercial corridors and we start redoing and renewing some of these areas of our city, we need to be mindful of this and engage those folks who are also just as passionate, and we need to start now.
Thank you. Same question to you, Richard Nino.
As I think should be obvious at this point, the whole issue of sustainability and being carbon neutral by 2050 is not a priority, has not been and is not a priority. Passing a declaration is all well and good, but what we need is a plan. How are we going to do that? How are we going to replace buses and fire trucks and other emergency vehicles in order to be able to achieve this, given what the expense will be? And a plan does not exist, and a declaration isn't a plan. If anything, it should be the basis for creating such, but that hasn't been done. So we're really at ground zero, first step. We need probably the Sustainability Committee to go back and look hard at the city and how we function and what the targets need to be in order to become self-sustaining in terms of carbon. I think 25 years is going to be difficult, but we can do things. I mean, ideas have been brought up already. You go to Madison and you see buses that are mixed fuel, hydrogen, I think, small steps, one vehicle at a time, but it needs to be all the time, constant and continuous in order to be able to reach the goal. But it starts with an examination of who we are, what we are, and what needs to be done, and that's the first step that has yet to be taken.
Okay, thank you. And this will be our last question before closing statements. The question is, what efforts will you support to promote alcohol-free activities for families? And we'll start with you, Josh Erdman.
I think that one of my focuses is on trying to make sure that we serve as a whole community as well as as a partially built-up community. So I would like to see there be more activities that are located not just in downtown or not just in certain areas, but are spread around so that people can get a sense of community in the south side, on the east side, on the west side, and then have other community events that bring things together and do so where we get everybody together. I don't think that there's those aspects, I think we need to have some separation between those activities that are designed to be surrounding business and some encouragement of entertainment and business aspects where alcohol gets served, but I think we also have to have an encouragement of those activities that families can participate in well. So I think that that requires us to continue to fund and support our recreation facilities, our parks facilities, as part of our essential services, to make sure that we can continue to have the types of things that people can go to and bring their families to as well. Soon as the Woodman Center is up and running, I think it's going to be very important to get a very solid plan in how the community gets involved as often as possible, have that be a circumstance that's not just the hockey piece and not just the conference piece, but also make sure that the community that's paying for the facility also gets as many opportunities to get themselves in there and have their families involved. And so, those are some of the aspects that I think I would want to support in making sure that there's family activities present in the city of Janesville.
Thank you. Same question to you, Michael Jackson.
I really find this a difficult question in the sense I don't really know what the council's role is in determining what private groups do or don't do when it comes to alcohol. We have the Alcohol Licensing Committee. Heather chairs that committee, and we have relegated certain responsibilities to them, and they certainly can help create a climate where every event does not have to include alcohol. But other than ALAC, I don't know. I headed Freedom Fest. It was the largest one-day event in Rock County. We had a very successful event, and it was alcohol-free. I really believe that groups can be successful alcohol-free. I've met with the Aqua Jays, with Mr. Cullen, about being alcohol-free, but even they have now a beer tent. So I find the whole discussion frustrating because I think I'm the little boy putting his finger in the dike. I don't know that we can hold back the wave of alcohol. It seems to have overwhelmed our community.
Thank you. Same question to you, Heather Miller.
Let's see. I think the city does a fairly decent job with separating the activities that are geared more toward adults and adult entertainment as opposed to family-oriented entertainment. Even when you look at the downtown offerings, true, they are more geared toward adult entertainment, but when you have these family events that are in the community spaces, you don't always have to have alcohol. And I struggle with that because as much as I want to support the lawful businesses and I want to support and engage with people who choose to have an alcohol event, I still go back to the foundations that not every family event has to have booze. And so, I think there's a balance that we have to try and find. I think we're doing a fairly good job at this point. My job as the Chair of the Alcohol Licensing Commission is to make sure that we are fair and we're actively upholding the laws that govern our community. And so, going forward, I think we're already doing that. I think it's necessary to maintain a realistic look at what are we offering and do we really need booze in order to have a family-friendly event?
Thank you. Richard Nino, your response, please.
As Michael pointed out, it's very difficult to assess or determine if the city itself, certainly the city council itself, has, can have a role in determining activities. That said, I think that the Recreation Department is already involved, their Halloween event, and they should be encouraged to try, and actually they are encouraged to try to engage the community as much as possible. Most of this will come out of the private sector. You look at J-Pac and their events. My wife is the past president of Downtown Janesville Incorporated. They, for the first time, put together a children's event along with Halloween, which was alcohol-free. Part of the problem that we face is that most events that are held, in some ways, serve as fundraisers. And fundraisers, from my experience in the city, generally require alcohol in order to actually make money. I will also say, however, that the presence of alcohol does not mean that something can't be family-friendly. We have music at the Marb every Tuesday night through the summer. There's a beer tent, and we have children dancing on the grass. We have families strewn all through the hill on blankets, listening to great music. And we have had almost no problems of behavior at any of the events that we've had, certainly in the seven years I've been downtown. It can work both ways. Most of it is going to come out of the private sector, however.
Thank you. Michael Cass, your response, please.
Unfortunately, I think it's just part of Wisconsin's culture is drinking, and until that culture shifts, you know, the city can work on ordinances and establish entertainment districts where people can have open carry during certain times or during certain events. Like Richard said, not, just because alcohol is present doesn't mean it's not family-friendly. The city can promote events that are geared towards family or that are alcohol-free, so individuals who don't drink can also attend. That's not a kids' event. Also, I think supporting Janesville Mobilizing for Change as well. They host Prevention in the Park, which is a family-oriented night in a park where there's snacks, entertainment. So the city supporting those things, advertising those things, council members being present, and also talking to people about that, those events are important. We have them. Again, it just goes to marketing them and knowing that they're available. Prevention in the Park travels to different parks throughout the spring and summer, and having maybe more funding for that or encouragement by the city to the residents to participate in those things is important. And I've participated in a few of the downtown events, the Wine Walk and Plano Fest, and I didn't see any issues, no one causing any issues that were egregious or could be harmful. And just promoting those things promotes our downtown and our economic development and ensuring that while we have the downtown events for adults, like Richard said, having downtown events for kids as well and for families to join in on is important as well.
Thank you. And now it's time for closing statements from the candidates. We'll continue to roll with our order as we've been rotating. So, Michael Jackson, we will start with you for closing statement.
This is two minutes?
Two minutes, yes.
I believe my time on the council, life experience, education, vision for the city of well, positioned me for a third term on the Janesville City Council. Given the current vitriol that is in our culture, I want to take my remaining moments and give a shout-out to the other members of the council. You might think it's strange when I'm running against them. No, I'm running with them. While we don't always agree, as Heather said earlier, I think each of us comes to, we have come to respect each other on the council. Each one of the council members sincerely wants what's best for this city. We then have a curious and interesting mix on the council. We have a member of the Sheriff's Department who is here tonight, a former cop, a couple of bankers, a small business owner, a retired minister, another retiree who is married to an attorney. During my first run at the council back in '21, I was a part of a candidate's forum. At the end of the, at the end, the audience was to fire questions at us just random. Anyone at the table could field a question. One gentleman raised a question about water meters. I didn't have a clue about water meters. Doug Markline raised his hand, and he said he would take the question. He was a developer, and he answered the question with a great deal of expertise. I love that. Each one of us on the council brings something unique to the table. The combined strength makes the council better. The combined strength makes the city better. The common council is one body made up of seven members. Who will serve you over the next two years is now in your hands. Obviously, you take the responsibility seriously, or you wouldn't be here tonight. I encourage you to vote. I encourage you to vote for Michael Jackson in April 1.
Thank you. Heather Miller, your closing statement, please.
Thank you all for taking the time to come out. This is such an important time. Our community is being faced with an awful lot of changes, and some you see and some that are to come. And I know that we have some important decisions that are going to have to be made in the near future, in the near coming weeks. And so, going forward, I think it's important to realize that every decision that's made here affects everyone else. So if you are choosing not to read an email, if you're choosing not to have the conversations, then you're choosing to do a very selfish and self-centered move. And I think we really need to put that in perspective when you start looking at who you want to have sitting on your city council. I think it's important to realize that perception is real, and perception sometimes can be skewed, but realistically, we are all fighting for the greater good. Having an opportunity to serve this community has been a blessing and a curse. I will tell you that. There have been times where, you know, you just get sick and tired of being sick and tired, and to no avail. I know that I'm fighting the good fight, and at some point, it matters. It matters to somebody, and your opinion matters to somebody. Just realize that. And it doesn't end. Never let it end.
Thank you. Richard Nino, your closing statement, please.
I've considered Janesville my home. I mean, it's been my home for the majority of my life, and as Michael had also said, and I'm sure everybody else actually agrees, I love Janesville. I grew up here. I had my first job at RM Boston on Main Street, and I've watched the city grow, and I've seen it decline, and now I've seen it reborn. And being from Janesville is a source of pride to me, and it is something about which I care greatly. I have very much enjoyed my first two years on the council, and I kind of surprised myself to a certain extent with that. I thought that being on the council would, there'd be more vitriol, and I would have people walking into my store yelling at me. And I didn't know how members of the council would necessarily get along. And in fact, it's been very enjoyable, as has been expressed. The members of the council, we all understand, I believe, that we share a desire for the best for Janesville. This is why we take the time to serve. It's certainly the reason why I wish to continue to be on the council. We're on the cusp of wonderful things. I'm proud of the opportunity to be able to participate in them, and I certainly wish to do so for two more years, and I greatly appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Michael Cass, your closing statement, please.
Again, thank you, everyone, for being here. Being on the council, for me, I would bring a younger perspective that we don't have currently. I bring the perspective that, that I, people my age are dealing with things that are going to impact us in the future, that are impacting us now. The cost of housing, the, you know, economic development. The cost of, of housing, the, you know, economic development, is there going to be family-sustaining jobs that available for people my age and younger as we go through? Are our schools going to have enough funding? That, you know, how we base our school funding is, is on our tax base, and so building more housing is, is funding for schools. Being proactive in addressing the issues or proactive in identifying them before they become a fire. When I worked as a lifeguard, it was, you weren't a good lifeguard if you saved five people. You're a good lifeguard if you prevented five people from drowning or needing saving. I think moving into the future and looking ahead is, the city council and the city itself needs to be proactive in what we are doing, anticipating downward trends in the market, anticipating good things, anticipating, you know, good money coming in. And that's the stuff that's going to impact me, impact the kids that are coming up, and so having your vote means that you're voting for the future of, of Janesville and a strong future for Janesville and just making some good change together. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Erdman, your closing statement, please.
Heather's right. Perception's everything. Running last year, running this year, again, my focus has been on transparency over and over again. There really needs to be better two-way communication between the citizens and the city. I attend as many community forum events for projects that I can. A lot of times, those, whereas they're presented by the city, is more of a, hey, we're already doing this, and if you'd want to give us some input, great, but, you know, it's kind of already done. I really think the citizens need to get engaged earlier, and we should be doing that at the council level and then making sure that that's the example that's present for the administration and making sure that the administration is always trying to do that two-way communication as much as possible. That's why I got involved in running last year. It's the reason I'm running again still. I understand people that have a frustration, and again, some of it's probably perception more than anything else. You know, I definitely would never say that any of the council members don't care, but the, the perception is definitely there that sometimes things fall on deaf ears. Myself, in the last five years, have had, been, experienced communications with the council multiple times, and I can tell you that it has involved a myriad of responses from a good, you know, acknowledgement of my comment to an, to a statement of, well, this is really just a volunteer thing for me and not my, and not my day job, so I don't have time for this. I've gotten responses of, this is too long, I don't feel like reading it. I've gotten responses of, probably the most common response, of just silence. So all of those things, to me, are not acceptable. I understand the role, but I want to bring a level of listening. I can't speak for everybody's experience, so I want to hear their experiences, and I want to bring those to the council as, as part of decision-making, and I want to make sure that the administration is continuing to do that as well at every opportunity. And so that's my biggest thing that I want to make sure happens. So I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been the League of Women Voters of Janesville's Candidate Forum for Janesville City Council. As a reminder, Election Day is Tuesday, April 1st, and there are six candidates running for four open seats on the city council. We want to close out by saying thank you to all the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you to our wonderful volunteers for making this program possible, and thank you to our audience, both in person and at home, for tuning in. We hope that you all will make your plan to vote either on or before April 1st. If you need information about where to find your polling place, if you want to see what else is on your ballot, or other information about voting, please do check out the state's website, myvote.wi.gov. It's a great resource for everything, and happy voting this year. Thank you all.[1713.11][1713.11]